So, I would like to call the Longmont County Authority Board of Commissioners meeting May 21st, 2024 to order. Can we have a roll call, please? Chair Peck, Commissioner Yarborough.
Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey.
Commissioner McCoy.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Executive Director Harold Dominguez.
Public Director Molly O'Donoghue.
County Supervisor Kendra James.
Sarah Ready, Attorney of Safety.
Erica Martin, Assistant City Attorney.
Tim Hall, Assistant City Attorney.
Commissioner Chris.
Do we have any agenda revisions to this packet? We need, I would like a motion to review and approve the April 16th, 2024.
I move the April 16th, 2024 minutes.
Second. It was moved by Councilor, no, Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey. Are there any, is there any discussion about the minutes? Seeing none, let's vote all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. So the minutes pass. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Martin is absent. So we are on to public advice, we heard. Is there any comment? I don't see any, so we will move on to elderly business. Resolution, who wants to take over the old business, elderly?
I will take that. So, Commissioners, you have item A, Resolution, LHA 2024-07, to approval of the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Longmont to accept additional CPG CD funds for the LHA accessibility project. This has been presented to you a number of times, and this is just continuing to finish out work. We have to do it involuntarily. I don't see any worries whatsoever.
Right. Can I have a motion to move LHA 2024-07? So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Yarborough, seconded by Commissioner McCoy. Is there any discussion on the LHA 2024-07? Seeing none, do we need to open this up to the public?
I don't think we have to.
Okay. So, let's vote all those in favor of passing 2024-07. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That passes six to one with Commissioner Martin absent. Resolution, LHA 2024-08, is approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Longmont to accept ARPA interest funds for accident and over crossing.
So Commissioners, we've talked to you all a few times about this. This was, the funding that we were able to utilize from the interest earnings on the ARPA dollars that we received from the federal government to put, grant the number that is in the.
Five hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Five hundred and twenty-five thousand into the early childcare facility associated with the Cent on Over. I think that was a big piece of leveraging the other grant funds that Molly was talking about, the two million dollars from the Colorado Health Foundation, which fully funds the early childcare facility at the Cent on Over.
Okay. Can I have a motion to move 2024-08?
I move Resolution, LHA 2024-08. Second.
It was moved by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey, seconded by Commissioner Yarborough. Let's vote all those.
Wait, I do have.
Oh, can you discuss it?
I do have a question. Because, as we recall from the city council meeting, I was concerned that we originally budgeted 200,000 for small businesses. And we discussed how it was difficult to meet the HUD requirements to meet small business. But I'm wondering if some of the ARPA could be funneled to small business in the amount of the 200,000, because it is not, its interest is not committed in the same way that the HUD money is. And my argument for that is that when we're talking about small businesses, they, everything that they do basically pays into the platform of core services. And we're talking sales tax, property tax, and use tax. We have some small businesses that are still having trouble getting going with COVID-related issues. And we do have two facilities or institutions that could help with that, the Latino Chamber of Commerce and the, the regular Chamber of Commerce, that they could find places for that money to go. Now, I know that early childcare education is one of our pillars, but we really need to fund our core if we're going to be able to do those special projects. And one of the things about sales tax, property tax, and use tax is it all goes into the general fund, which we're anticipating might be a bit tight this, in the next five weeks and stuff. So, is it possible to split some of this money and send it to small businesses?
Not in your capacity today, because you're accepting the funding from the city via council direction. So that would be a council decision if they wanted to split that funding. But council's already directed it to go there.
Well, I brought it up at council now, so I'm just still beating that drum. And I think we'll hear it when we come up to budget discussions, why we will need more in our general fund. So.
Okay. Right. Is there any more discussion on this resolution? Seeing none. It was already moved by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey, seconded by Commissioner Yarborough. Let's vote on this resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to dissent.
All those opposed. So this passes five to two with.
No, five to one.
No, five to two.
Marsha Martin here, she doesn't love it.
Marsha's just not voting.
Thank you. Five to one with Commissioner Chris in opposition and Marsha Martin, Commissioner Martin absent. So we are now at Aspen Haven Senior Flooring Issue Update.
I will take this one. Since we last, the last LHA board meeting, this board commissioner instructed staff to move forward as trying to solve the SML flooring issue, with a couple of tasks that we could go down. We were successful in getting the general contractor and the architect to, we go with this, Tim? To sign tolling agreements, which would pause the statute of limitations, which means we have signals that all groups want to work together on this, which is good. I met out on site last week with the general contractor and the flooring materials supplier, and walked and came up with some ideas for solutions, and we all ended up with at least a direction that all of us could agree to, moving forward. And so what we're waiting for now is for them to come back with a schedule and a pricing estimate and a proposal for how they plan to cover that. And so once we have that in hand, we'll share that with the board. But we just have pieces moving. That's a basic update for now, but it is certainly a high priority to move along.
Thanks for all you work on this. And I know it's been a pain, many pains throughout the LHA.
We're painful for the people living there.
Yeah.
We just want to get it fixed.
Do you have a date? Did they give you a date as to when they could do?
No. What we did talk about is, rather than piecemealing, this is their busy season, so rather than piecemealing the work, we would, we would like to have the group in a core and have it really coordinated and do it all at one time, which means the install, assuming all works out, could be about October. That's probably what, if we wanted all to happen in one time rather than piecemealing work. And this is all assuming that all groups are coming together with a solution that is outside of insurance or legal action.
So are you going, are the residents going to have to stay out until October?
We, speaking with them on that, it seems as though we should be able to just have them exit the unit for the day and do the work at that time. For some of the units that have the flooring in the bedrooms as well, it might be a two-day process, but it would not be overnight. It'd be livable overnight.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Who moves their furniture?
That's also to be worked out with the proposal as well.
And right now you have a workaround to keep the flooring safe?
Yes, we've got tape to manage potential trip hazards. We haven't had any, we don't have anything sticking up. It's all managed. And we haven't, we can still pass inspection, which is the most important, but we certainly want to get this taken care of before that becomes a risk.
Okay. Thanks for the update. Proposition 1B, I need update.
Okay, so this is something that kind of applies to city council as well, but because it is so housing focused and it would impact LHA, we wanted to bring this to your attention tonight. So the Prop 1B funds that the voters passed in November are, is the replacement of the sales tax that was going towards the jail renovation that will expire, and the voters agreed to, the voters voted to continue that, but for the purpose of affordable housing. So it is anticipated that revenues would start being generated in 2025, and then a distribution to communities in a shape or fashion after that. What we've been working on with Boulder County and as the Regional Housing Partnership on the city side, is coming up with a recommendation for the Board of Commissioners for a funding distribution model. A myriad of options have been talked about. One was fully competitive, which might look similar to a worthy cost process, just because that is all competitive and there is a pretty lengthy application process. And then what, what Longmont was advocating for is something that was closer to the disaster recovery funds, where we used database information to make sure that everybody got something that was relative to their needs, but also the communities came together and decided to do some set-asides for the specific communities or, or needs that were extreme. So we set aside some funds for Lyons and Jamestown, because their impacts were so high and their capacity was so low, things like that, ways to come together to help all of, you know, all the boats rise. What the Regional Housing Partnership has ended up putting together, this is all at a staff level, is what you see in your packet here. Right now, staff are going to the cities and towns leadership to get their input, and then eventually the Board of Commissioners would hold a public work session and then make a decision after that. And so what staff has been working on is making sure leadership of the cities and towns are aware of the proposal, and getting feedback on that in preparation for board. So what is proposed here is kind of a multi-tiered model. Primarily, it's population-based as a baseline, but before you get to there, we did work on a couple of set-asides that staff agreed were, was fair and equitable, to ensure that everybody got a minimum amount. So Lyons and Netherlands specifically, who would like to utilize any funding they got in-house, meaning have staff to do it, they, we would allow them a minimum of $100,000 a year with this, which could support a staff person, which could really amplify the work. But the really small towns, Jamestown and Ward, their allocations would be to Boulder County to help manage that area generally. And then we also talked about having an opportunistic fund, so for the small community, small and medium communities, so everyone except for Boulder County, Longmont, and Boulder, to be able to access a funding pot that is ready and waiting if an opportunity arises, but their annual allocation doesn't serve. And so if the safety net, however, is, if they don't spend that in a reasonable amount of time, how much time is yet to be sorted, or more, more high level at this point, then Boulder and Longmont, who have established mechanisms to be able to spend this type of money on affordable housing, could swoop in and make sure it's still being sent out the door and serving the community in a timely fashion.
So Molly, when I look at the population, what is using what, you know, what you said about the, LA said it was 106,000.
Yeah. So this is, so we had to use census data, because that is the only source that all communities have access to, and it would be the same, the same methodology for population calculation across the board, and only within Boulder County, because those are the only taxpayers that are paying in. So Erie is actually quite small, because most of their population is in wealth, so we're using only their Boulder County population.
Oh, okay.
So we're using.
Are you going to update the numbers? Are you going to update the 2023 census numbers?
Sure.
I, we, the plan will be to, under this proposal, update them each year, so that each year they change if populations, if people are moving around, it's still reflected.
So part of the problem is not, I mean, so you have to use census estimates, but our number will always be lower than our total population, because we will not count the population in Longmont's in account.
The same as here.
Same as here.
So that's the difference.
Okay.
The other major set aside is, which this was built into the ballot language, that 85% of the funds would go towards unit generation efforts, and 15% would go towards housing-related services. So the proposal here is to kind of do the same thing, where, but in this case Boulder County provides all the human services for all the small and medium cities and towns. So we would take Boulder, Boulder County, and Longmont and do a population split, because each of those three has human service agency funding processes already that we could use things that we already have to get the money out the door and get it serving the community as best.
Molly, does the whole 12% go to affordable? Are you going to split that between affordable and attainable?
It is allowed to be used for attainable. We have not drilled down that far yet, because that would be, if this proposal goes forward, that would be Longmont's decision to make how they, how they should.
Okay. I'm going to split it.
As long as we're meeting the ballot language for eligible activities, we could do that.
So there's no action required? This is just a report, is that correct?
Correct. I've had some conversations with the city manager group, and it appears that everybody's in alignment. I know that, I mentioned to Molly, there was some questions about the small communities, Lyons and Netherlands. I think, like I said on this side, they're good with it. Not sure that that's what's being said consistently. But the other interesting piece is, remember in the housing debate?
Yeah.
Lyons, Ned, and what was the other town?
Jamestown? Ward? Was it Netherlands?
No, it was Lyons, Netherlands, and then a town in Larimer County. They're looking at a mountain housing authority.
Oh. Was it Allen Park?
Allen Park, I think. They're looking at a mountain housing authority. So that may be different in how they approach. So it's hard to say what's, what's all in the mix in the city manager discussion. You know, the other component of this is, how much housing can they really build in their communities, just because of the geographic?
Correct.
The terrain and everything else have to deal with. So I would say, on this piece in particular, if you all could look at it, if you have any questions, let us know. If you all support this concept, let us know, so then we can communicate that to our counterparts. And then when they have the public meeting, definitely when we, if this is the direction you all want to go, when you're in our council, to be in attendance at that public meeting and/or talk to the county commissioners about this approach, because it's not clear what is on their mind in terms of how they look at their housing funds. So look at this, and then we'll talk.
Okay. So I see that they have the homelessness in the regional, is there, are we integrating some supportive steps? Or I know we talked about the whole regional homelessness support and how we all can work together. Since we're already kind of doing this, and Boulder County would be the go-to for the smaller towns as far as wraparound services. So is there any way we can kind of tie in some of that for that regional homeless piece, instead of having two regional different? I know this is a fund, opportunity fund and all of that, but I just feel like I don't want us to be duplicating the same thing and having different meetings for the same thing, and am I making myself clear?
Kind of. I, I think I understand. What I, what I think I hear you say is that each jurisdiction, each city has a different type of population and homelessness, and they have, because of the way their jurisdictions are, the way their use of, set up, maybe the same formula doesn't work for every city. Is there a way, do we have to follow the county model in order to get the funding we need for ourselves?
I think if this is the approach utilized, and we get the money in for supportive services funding, that would be locally as an imperative funding, in terms of the conditions, maybe for network. It's kind of a different piece, because in the same conversation, we have other conversations working in terms of alignment on the data and having access to the same data set, because that's really the biggest problem right now, is we don't know where there's a duplication with services, because the data hasn't been opened to everyone. We're getting close to that. Once that data's open to everyone, then, you know, that was a conversation of our ECC and what we're trying to do, because if we can get everybody to utilize it, then we'll start seeing where there's a duplication. What we've talked about is, to Molly's point, Boulder and Longmont, in terms of supportive services generally, or in the county, we're further down the road, and our smaller neighboring communities don't have the capacity to build that within their existing structure. So I think the theory is, is that the county would really support Lafayette, Lewisville, Superior, and those communities. Boulder and Longmont would do what we're doing, but we integrate on the data side and make sure that we're working collectively and not at cross purposes. And it's, I think it's also what I mentioned in that discussion, it's a little bit different, because when you look at our model, and you look at how we're working within the center of excellence, we pretty much have most of our divisions engaged in it, and so we don't necessarily have this single group that's doing the work, and there's some nuances and differences in that. And I guess, the example I would give you is, we're probably more coordinated with our public safety department than the county social services are, with their public safety department, and how we're approaching it. I don't know if that's answering your question or not.
It was a good answer, though.
And if you're reserving 5%, and you have a population of 2,000, that might be not very much money set aside, but also maybe you don't have that many people. So you'd hate to put that money not to use.
And maybe the best example is, when the county created, I'm going to have to rely on Sarah a little bit for this, when they, when they created a co-responder program, they started talking to Longmont and Boulder, because, hey, we've had ours going for much longer than anywhere. And there were just some philosophical challenges that we were having, in that with our co-responders, we do dispatch a police officer, because we feel like it's, we're putting them into some really tough situations, that you never know when it's going out of control. I think the county's approach was not to send their co-responders with a police officer. And, and so part of it is, we may be here, and they may be here, or they may be here, and it just, it's hard to align those pieces. But I think working coordination in terms of, we don't go here, they go here, to make sure we're in the right boundaries is the work that will come out of this.
Yeah, I just don't, just, I know that was just a preliminary conversation about the whole regional homelessness. I just feel like, I want to be, I want us to be clear. I know we need the data, I know you stress that a lot, and that is true. We need to cross-reference what's going on over there, what's, what's going on here, that person you served over there, and now they're over here two days later, now we're serving them. I just want to make, I think this is, this is really good, but I think that we need to somehow, and I could be wrong, and thinking crazy, but if we can make sure that those who the county supports will continue to support, you know, with that regional program, and then our support, our services will be amplified with the funding that we do regionally, but contingent upon the data that we, that we receive, and maybe it's with our new dashboard and all of that, you know what I'm saying? So I think there's some kind of way we can integrate all of that together regionally to make sure we stay, you know, our services stay excellent the way they are and, and advance them however we can. Because I think when we come together regionally, I'm not opposed to it, as I said, but I don't want it to pull us down and start using our resources, and then we start creating disparities within our own community with the sources, resources we already have. And so how can we look at this model of what the county will do, and what, what they will do, and what they will provide in this situation with wraparound services? And when we're talking regionally, well, hey, you already doing that for those, so let's concentrate on what is not being done for everyone else. Right?
I have some information for you on that. So monthly, there is a, literally a regional meeting that's led by Boulder County HSBC, and several staff sit on that for Longmont. I'm not on that meeting every month, but my work partner is. And so we are at the region talking about coordinated entry and what that looks like for everyone, and we're, there's several, a long list of folks that sit in these meetings, and we are, we're having those conversations. Yeah.
When you're getting at what, I mean, I wish I could fully answer your question, we don't know, and that's part of it, but you're getting at the component, when we look at the voucher conversation I've been having with you all, and that I brought up in that meeting, where if 50% of the county's vouchers are here, what are the supportive services that they're providing to their voucher holders, which I would argue, in its current environment, not a lot, which means what's happening is, as an organization and as a community, we're picking that up. And I think that, to your point, we need to get clarity on that, because it's an additional strain that we're bearing as a community, because they're placing their voucher holders here. And then it's not only creating a strain on our social service support, it creates challenges in terms of our vouchers, because they pay at a higher rate. And we need that data to really start untangling all of this. That's why I keep saying, we've got to get that information quick.
So you could have a, more of a county, rather than, you know, each town? It seems like people are moving out of town, but should, does the county handle that, the supportive services?
Well, I mean, that's hard, because within the county, you have three housing authorities. And they each have their distinct boundaries. And so what's happened, what I mean, what I'm mentioning on the voucher side is related to this old, old agreement that created the situation. So you have three different housing authorities, you have multiple municipalities, each one of those municipalities are providing a different level of service within their community. So it's kind of hard to untangle that. And I think the big piece in this is, that we've talked about as managers, is each one of our communities, we really have our own, you know, it's our own community, and we have our own distinct issues that are not consistent from community to community. Sarah and I have talked about this. The unhoused issue in Longmont is distinctly different than the unhoused issue in Boulder. And what we're seeing in some of our ancillary communities are different than the two of us, maybe more similar to us, but yet still different. And so we're all having to use really specific strategies locally, because our challenges are different.
So to your point, Harold, that we have, we are using 50% of Boulder's vouchers, the funding, it looks like it's based upon population, but shouldn't it be on the population served, rather than on the population of the city?
I think getting everyone to agree to that's certainly next to impossible.
I know, because a lot of the funding does go to Boulder because of their population, which has been part of the frustration. which has been part of the frustration.
Well, but it's hard. It's hard because if you look at, what population are you looking at? What I referenced was the voucher holders, so 50% of the voucher holders. Boulder has a higher population than unhoused. And, and so depending what data set you're, you're referencing, and I think that's why it's cleaner to probably just use the population in this model because if I were sitting in Boulder, I think I could make a pretty straightforward argument of what their challenges are and how they're different, similar to the argument that I'm making here locally. And I think that's why they felt population was the easiest approach.
It's most neutral, certainly, but also there's this give and take too of, for Longmont specifically, and this is something we've been open with the regional housing partnership communities about, that yes, we are, we are shouldering a lot of the burden in terms of the affordable housing when we use the voucher, the seg, that segment of it. But also from the regional partnership side, we need Erie and Lafayette and Superior and Lewisville, we need you to build so that they don't have to come here. So that's kind of our, our balancing test we've been using.
I mean, in my meeting, just to kind of twist a little bit, I said, actually, if you're looking at it, you should figure out what's the percentage of sales taxes going into that part and then allocate it based on how much you city's paying into the sales tax.
So we did look at that as an option as well.
I was, I was thinking that that would be, they would be like, we're probably a lot, lot less likely to, to go, go with something like that if that was, if that was proposed. They, they have turned down quite a few developments, even the most basic, even the ones that had purchasable units in the, in the last, I, I see this because I have my students present every semester and find out that they're like going, turning it down, turning it down, turn it down. They're like, over and over again, developments, because they're not quite right. One particular one is Redtail Ridge, they're right across the street from my school, and it has commercial and a mixed-use development in there. Now, it's, they had like three divisions of the development that had so far in the last.
So the opportunistic fund was, it was kind of that opportu, it's dull, but it's the opportunity. If you, smaller, medium community, you have something, you're gonna go for it and do it. Here, you have access to do that. You can't make it work. We've got the two communities that can make it happen as that safety net. That was one of the attempts to give them the shot, but also make sure it gets, gets out there.
Harold, you had mentioned to me that you were following the Supreme Court on their ruling on homelessness, and had they made a decision on that yet?
They have not made a, and that was what I was gonna say, so what none of us know is what's potentially gonna happen with the Supreme Court decision. And, and there was a case out of Oregon, and it really was about, so you go to the Boise case, and generally the Boise case, at 30,000 feet, said that prohibiting camping and sleeping in public places violated the U.S. Constitution in terms of cruel, it's cruel and unusual punishment. That's what they were arguing.
The punishing status. So it's saying, you know, like, your status is none as individual, so that was the, that was the kind of underpinning. But generally, the city has always kept a pretty solid eye on the Boise decision and, and advised as if it might apply to us, even though there hasn't been any binding decision that said it would. But you'll see like Denver and most of the big communities operate as if it does because sometimes it might apply to us anyway.
And depending on what article you read.
That is right.
A lot of articles think that it's hard, it's likely that the Supreme Court will side with the cities on this issue. And there were interesting arguments, and the analogies they were drawing were really interesting to read through. But it wouldn't surprise me to see that the Supreme Court comes in and says, no, it's a local, I mean, essentially, some are making more local control arguments, others are making arguments that say, well, taking that, if you don't have a restroom, is it not illegal to defecate in public? Making it akin to sit and lie. So, you know, probably in the next about two to three months.
Yeah, end of summer, I think he's getting there, so you'll see something, but it's not, I don't think it's coming anytime soon.
And, and I think for you all, I mean, we've talked about this, I think that's then where on the policy side, that's really gonna probably fall in terms of what the community starts asking for based on that decision. And it's not gonna be easy because you're gonna have people all over your place in this area. But, yeah. We're what, we're, we'll be waiting to see.
How many vouchers can we get for the LHS?
Well, all right, we have that coming up.
Yeah. So now we're doing the review and acceptance of the LHA audit.
So we printed the management decision and analysis for you guys. It's usually the first 14 papers of the audit, goes through where our program and services are, who we serve, what properties, and kind of gives a little detail about those, and then it goes into the financial analysis and shows you why our assets increased, why our liabilities increased, whatever increases or decreases that we have throughout the portfolio. Right now, we had about a $700,000 increase in our grant funding through HUD. That was due to part of an increase and also vouchering up using our reserves. This was the first year that we actually used about 150,000 of our reserves that we had never actually tapped into before. So that gave us a great increase this year. Cash has increased at about almost $190,000. The two contributors there are the sale of 612 million, that brought in almost $500,000. And then we also had both the 2022 and 2023 funding in 2023 that came for the LRA program, which is the other local rental assistance program that we have through the city that we manage. So that kind of increased our cash. Our current ratio right now stands at 6.73. You wanna be anywhere from 1.2 to 2 to be in a good liquidity stage, and we're at 6.73. So we're actually in a good, good standpoint there. Our net position increased about 6.4 million, and a lot of that is due to just revenue and expenses that come in throughout the year. The biggest piece of that was the, the assignment of Village Place Associates carry forward note that ends up on LHA's books. So it got transferred as an assignment, which increased, that was 5.9 million, which increased the net position of the Longmont housing board. We did unfortunately get one funding this year. Last year, we had four, we did get another one. I knew it immediately as I started planning the audit, we had, I had missed some reporting on some ARCA funding, and so I knew right away it was gonna be a funding. And they picked ARCA, they are, they picked ARCA as far as our testing because it's a high risk, it's still high risk. So they picked that along with our HUD program and tested it. I had already submitted all the reports, but because they were submitted in 2024 and not in 2023, we got it.
This ARCA dollar, this ARCA's gonna have to learn, you said that one.
I'll read it.
So hopefully next year, no, we're not getting any ARCA this year, right?
No, we just signed the last, at least from the affordable housing side, we just signed the last agreement today, so.
But, I mean, still a good audit, I mean, I think that was, yeah, one of those, one of those issues that, you know, we were just talking about it just now, is if we ever have to do this again, how do we do it in a way that just doesn't require this ongoing cycle of recording it, even though you haven't quite spent it or you've spent it, and it's just, you gotta work through that. But we may never have another ARCA program again, so who knows?
And all of our ARCA, on the city side, all the other ARCA funds associated with affordable housing will be paid up, done in 2024, except for the one stock position that we have in '25.
So were there any advantages or benefits from the recording and all of that with ARCA funding, or would you say it was just all hell?
So, so here, so the reporting kind of just needs to be looked at, like what makes sense? So what I was having to report on was the financial stats. Well, the financial stats was done, it's a, it's a one done, so I'm submitting the exact same report quarterly, by the 10th, nothing changes until the very end of the project where you close it out and usually the CPG, you provide beneficiary data, but ARCA doesn't require the beneficiary again.
But the project is not, it's when, when we're got CO and we have people moving in, that's when the project intent has been served, that we funded for construction, so.
It's like, I give Erin a million dollars to build this project, and I'm done, she's building it every year, every month, she has to put a report saying, no change, no change, no change, no change. And then when you get, and then when you get the CO, then you file the final report. And, and that's where it was like, that's where I was, I said, can we do a preliminary final so you don't have to say, no change for X number of months?
Well, I thought I had all my ARCA's, but those were continued from 2022. So I'm still reporting on $200,000 that we received for Christmas.
Which will be done soon.
So, yeah.
So that's a problem, I mean, when you look at it, it's not a material finding because it's not that something's wrong, it's just they didn't submit the report, which the report that they were submitted.
Couldn't say anything anyway.
Other than no changes.
Yeah.
I think when, when we were building it in 2022, the idea was, okay, so if we have to do this for every other funding program, we're like, we're used to it, it'll just be in the mix through the regular quarterly cycle. But it's still a one-off funding program, and it is still a different thing to track. So I think the intent was to streamline.
So that was just the one finding or five? Because you said it was four last year and what year just one?
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
We're nitpicking.
I want zero.
That's why you only had one. You're working.
Working there.
That's great. Good job.
I mean, where were we at when we transitioned?
Yeah.
Double visits.
Yeah.
Really remember.
Yeah. It was, and we were, we were budgeting in the negative.
In the negative, yeah.
Well, and they were, those were material findings. I mean, I think that's another discussion before, it was like lack of internal controls.
Yes.
There were financial findings, I mean, it was, that, those were material.
This is a program finding, it's not a financial finding? We've got, we're, the financial findings for a few years now.
Yeah, we haven't had any financial findings.
So we're at the development updates from Harold.
You need to, to.
No, oh, yeah.
Accepted, accepted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You move to accept.
We do. Can I have a motion then to, do I hear you say the motion?
So I, yeah, I'll move to accept it, yes.
Oh, I wasn't.
I heard you, I thought I heard you say that, so I made the motion the second.
Yes, if we need to, yes.
So when's your motion?
So I moved to accept the LHA financial audit.
Second.
Audit, yes.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferri and signed by Commissioner McCoy to accept the LHA 2023 audit. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes?
Six to zero.
I had to. She said aye. Yeah, yeah, she said aye.
It's not even that little.
He keeps you count.
So development updates.
I'm gonna go first, since this is all following under my, my report. I wanted to cover the voucher status update. So in 2023, in 2022, we had $5.3 million in vouchers, and then for 2023, we had $5.8 million, so that increased by 8.4%. For 2024, if you remember, this is one of the goals we set to increase voucher funding, the number went from 5.8 in 2023 to 6.8 in 2024. So we have about a million dollar increase in our voucher funding. So that, that's a, a good thing in that we're getting more money. They were pretty stagnant for what? At least seven to 10 years, or it was, they, they, and so we are seeing increases now. Now, that's based on a few factors. Obviously, it's dependent on Congress and budget appropriations, the program requirements, public housing agency, we submit data, it goes into it. The thing that we were seeing that we thought was really the headwind into the housing authority, the vouchers, was performance, because if, some of you may remember when we took it over, is that they weren't fully vouchering up and they weren't utilizing the two-year tool. And so now that's been pretty consistent. So we think the performance piece was a big change for us this year. And then obviously, policy changes. Here's the challenge of this, we got a million dollars, and we're currently not releasing any vouchers because if you remember, we allocated project-based vouchers to Village Place, Christmas.
And Ascent.
And Ascent.
And then Atwood.
And then Atwood. So we have to manage the project-based vouchers with a total of $1 million. Here's the big challenge, the 2024 fair market increases have been significant in terms of what that means that we're paying for each individual voucher. So we got in addition a million dollars, the fair market rates increased. And if you remember when the county, to my point earlier, with Boulder and Boulder County went to 110%, the last time, we moved to 105, and we said, we, that's all we can move. We're actually sliding back to 100% to make sure we continue funding the vouchers that we have. And so the fair market rents are basically eating up this increase. And so if you remember when Congresswoman Booth this year, and I said, I'd like to talk about this with her staff, now that we have this, and, and did I get that right?
That's right, we are just confirming that VHP and VCHA also had to roll back to 100 this year.
Oh, they rolled back, they rolled back from 110, okay, so that's, we didn't know that, I didn't know that. So because the rents are increasing so dramatically, everybody's having to slide back to 100. The good news for us is we're now at a level with them if they move back to 100. But the rent increases are just eating up the money, so we may not, we're not gonna have a significant number of new vouchers, if any new vouchers, because the rent increases are basically taking all the money. Probably gonna lose vouchers, we could lose vouchers.
Well, currently, right now, we are lowering our voucher count so that we can have PBB set. So in January, we had 426 vouchers, and then by April, we were at 416. So we had dropped to 110 vouchers, but we're seeing almost $20,000 increase in our budget. So our costs are increasing, but our vouchers are going down, so then it's a double edged sword. You're gonna lose admin dollars because that's based on a per voucher assignment, what you utilize, but.
But it's gained on the other side too, PBB income being, for the legitimate still start coming in on the PBB side. It's kind of moving it over.
Yeah, but it's a different time.
Not until, yeah, not until we can actually voucher up, but, but that kind of, we might still be at the same vouchers that we are today, so.
I know this is another crazy, I, I don't know if it's an idea, whatever, but can a city put a cap on rent increases?
I said the other day, and I was told.
Well, so there's, there's rent restriction issues, the estate statute on rent restriction prohibits us from, like, rent restrictions.
But there are other municipalities, maybe not in the state of Colorado, but other states that cities can do that?
Well, so, maybe like New York had a, had a pretty famous policies on rent restriction, but I think in reaction to that, the state, state legislature in Colorado prohibited rent restriction.
Is that part of that Telluride decision, or is that predated, I mean?
It feeds into it, it's predated Telluride, but it, that is, but yeah.
Okay, certainly.
So the Telluride decision was on requiring affordable.
Yes.
Housing units on the rent, percentage on, on the rental side.
Yeah, well, exactly, and, and then the Telluride decision looked at that statute, applied that statute, as long as there was a voluntary agreement, that was okay. And that's why we had, for those of you around the early stages of IH, we went kind of out of our way to make it a voluntary agreement when you're going to put onsite units on, for rental, as IH compliance. But since the legislature has many of that statute to allow IH-type programs to, to kind of be exempted from that control statute.
Well, a lot of it has to do with ownership, right? Properties that the city owned, we can set the rent.
Yeah, if the city, if LHA owns, we can set, set a rent, but we, every LHA property is subject to.
But then your tax credits and your investors are indicating where the rents need to be set, so.
Darn it.
Yeah.
It's free market idea. What about incentives for lower rents in terms of property tax?
Well, so, the city has Chapter 479, which is incentives for providing affordable housing onsite for various development fees, but. So, so, but you have to, generally, so we, we use 479 incentives on most of our developments as well to get the, to get the permanent fees down, because 100% of our units are affordable, which would be restricted. But some other developers do use that, that incentives, like outside of IH and outside of other things, just to produce their permanent fees, but I don't think that that necessarily takes up for the gap between what they could make in the open market and, and affordable price.
It still allows them to do market value, they use that.
Well, 479 required, if you are getting a, sorry, Molly might wanna talk about this more, but i- i- if you're getting a 479 permanent fee reduction, you have to have deed restricted to, to affordable units, which means permanent fee restricted in the US.
We can ask for more, I mean, we can make a decision as a council to ask for more affordable housing if we felt that was necessary.
Yeah, but for a lot of people, affordable housing is still not affordable, so.
No, no, I agree, I'm just saying, that's, that's the only tool I think we have in the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you could affect the property taxes, I mean, so here's, this group couldn't do it. Now, the only place we can do that is when we go into a special limited partnership on a project that meets the requirements under the LI-Tech standards and what we have to go through, and so when we engage in that SOP, they pay us money to the housing authority, but then they're exempt from taxes. I think, you know, doing something for particular renters, you have market rate to, to do it, I think the only way council could probably do that is to take money out of the general fund and create a program of which you would be a reimbursement, but I don't think you could create a different taxing piece on, on this side, on, on the taxing side of it.
Definitely wouldn't do it on an individual basis.
Right.
Sounds too complicated.
You would be taxed plus if you had a, a permanent fee restriction, affordable deed restriction, so we've had people in our old IH programs, I think 2008 IH program, where their deed restrictions could have rolled off, cause they were ten-year deed restrictions, and they voluntarily liked, voluntarily liked it to keep them on to, to get a lower taxable base on their property taxes, but I don't think that's what you're talking about.
Does the city of Longmont make decisions on that?
No, but the 233 just passed in the legislature, I've been all the way through the purged of it, it's gonna step down the property tax for a while.
Yeah, but I understand the city of Longmont doesn't make that decision.
No, and we make decision about what's, are now right looking.
Yeah, but so, we can't change anything in regards to our, our, given anybody incentives?
No, but we can, can choose to accept or not accept the county assessor's assessment as a home rule, isn't that correct?
You, you might wanna talk to the person who thinks that.
Yeah.
Significant amount of time doing just that.
Share your knowledge.
So, the question is.
Well, about.
Would that weaken, weaken?
Whether, yeah, as a home rule, do we have to accept the county assessor's value on property?
I don't, I don't believe that you can object on behalf of a property owner. And then all municipal properties are already tax exempt. I mean, so there, there is statute, and it has to go through the state, you can't do it through the county assessor either, but nonprofit affordable housing providers can apply and be granted property tax exemption, I mean Habitat for Humanity has tons of them.
So, so that's what our special limited partnership does, we take, we take a partial ownership in whatever project, and that project pays us to take that partial ownership, and then the, the project itself then becomes tax-free, so that's the point of this special limited partnership. We mostly do that with kind of our own projects, but there's a couple examples out there that are not really an LHA project that are using the LHA tax exemption through the special limited partnership.
Well, it's a double edged sword, so you flip the sword over, and the more you reduce that revenue, then what you start doing is constraining, not on the housing authority's side, but on the city's side, you start constraining the operational issue, you know, capacity.
Back to the general, yeah.
That goes back into the general fund, which is what you were talking about in that, you know, it's highly likely that level one, I mean, we, we could theoretically, you know, certain votes pass, it could be level one expenses is all we can do with the revenue model, and so, whatever side you're looking at, there's gonna be a cut somewhere in terms of how you're trying to deal with the situation.
I'm sorry, I was just thinking, I didn't try to go down this rabbit hole, I was just really thinking about the vouchers.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, this is really good information, don't get me wrong, but I was just thinking about how the market rate is really affecting the vouchers, distribution and everything, so that's, that's, and like you said, it's a two edged sword, right?
Yeah, well, and that's why I get very cautious about making these sweeping policy changes without, you know, thinking through what could be some of the unintended consequences, so if we're just very specific and cognizant on, okay, we're gonna preserve this for LHA properties or for certain aspects, rather than just this whole citywide, because that can have greater negative impacts.
I think if, if we look at it from the LHA side, and you know, what's, what's impacting the numbers in the rent, I mean, if, if, you know, you look at it just basic economics, the vacancy rates are still pretty low.
Yeah.
Sarah, I don't know, do you know what the vacancy rates are like?
So, it's across my head.
But. No, across the board.
Oh, across the border? Oh, I see, like conventional, they're, they're at least, like, that's just a bit notch of their ribbon cutting, I think they're 95% rent.
Oh, okay.
So.
I mean, we have, they're very high.
95% of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we know we're sub 5% vacancy rates, so when you're sub 5% vacancy rates on multifamily, your rents are gonna continue to rise, so the demand is more than the supply is fulfilling, and, and then that's what's bleeding down into the voucher world, and then if we go back to our housing needs analysis, that does apply to what we're looking at, we know that there's a lack of higher-end apartments in the community, and so the housing studies have indicated that what's happening then is somebody like me, who could pay for a really high-end apartment, if you don't have that vol, if you don't have that available in your, availability in your community, what they're doing is they're buying the next level of that. So then they're pricing the folks who can afford that, and then it just starts snowballing, and we've seen that through, what, two housing assessments, that that is continuing to occur, so it's a slight, it, the market is what's eating the voucher value, because the rents are continuing to be able to be escalated because of the demand, which, when you look at high interest rates on the homeownership side, what you typically see is as interest rates are increasing, more people are moving into the rental market versus the other side, so, I mean, we're dealing with national and international economic forces.
Well, is this one the opportunity fund going to yield more vouchers or could it be used for voucher, just for building or preserving associated services?
Okay, so on the development updates, do we have any more after the voucher?
I just can do a couple brief ones, if you're interested. So, Christmas, we have a grand opening June 6th, and so you're all invited, I know that Mayor Peck, you're not, Commissioner Peck, Mission Chair Peck.
True.
You're not able to attend, correct?
Um, I might be able to, maybe with seven.
Okay, so I think we will be reaching out to confirm if anybody would like to speak at the event, and if not, we can always do it as well, but we would like to offer you that opportunity first. So that's exciting, I took a tour the other day, cause we were showing the Ascent investor some comps in the area, so I was, I'm excited to get there. Zinnia is moving almost ahead of schedule on construction, so we are starting lease-ups in June, we are starting the process to get people geared up and ready.
That's great.
So we just got our tenant selection plan finalized, which says exactly how the tent that people come in, through the shelter and through Boulder Shelter being the referral agency, and getting that all sorted, and related to tenant selection plan, the, if you recall, on the suites, where we had DOH agreed to modify it to 100% local case conferencing rather than the statewide list, MHP has run down the waitlist, and we are through it, and they're about to transition over to local case conferencing, so that's also good news.
So that means local people have coordinated entry now will go into the suites versus those individuals getting caught in the state system.
That's great.
So when we talk about working with the unhoused that we were talking about earlier, that gives us a direct connection.
So Zinnia, because that is structurally funded and purpose-built for permanent support of housing, does have a mix of statewide list and local coordinated entry. So we would be doing, we'll be leasing up, and I think everyone could start occupying, they plan to get their CO in September. Ascent, we are cruising along to closing, so we're in that very heightened period of the last couple months right before closing, so next month at this meeting, you'll see all of our closing resolutions for Ascent, but we're getting all the funding in order and a million legal documents in order, so, and they're cruising along, getting ready for building permit as well, which is anticipated at that same time in July.
Don't be surprised if we have legal documents that are coming at the last minute and have to have special meetings, because it just seems like every closing we've gone through, that's happened.
We're trying to plan, we learned a lot of lessons, and we're trying to plan ahead at least for the, the formal actions needed, but yes, I would not put a pass just to have.
It happened on the hotel. It happened on the hotel.
Yeah. So, Village on Main, we are halfway through construction as of this month, we are certainly in the thick of it, and so these residents are, they are being so wonderful, they are very, they're very involved, so we do have a lot of conversations going with a lot of different people, but overall for the, it's heavy construction there right now, heavy construction in the lobby and the common spaces, and it, they're, they're being real troopers, and so we just had a big, we're doing construction meetings with all the residents once a month, we just had it yesterday, and considering what the, the noise and the fire alarms and the plumbing, you know, they had to buy a burst pipe and things, that they're being very patient and being troopers, so.
Well, and now they're getting caught up in the Coffin Street project, so then we're turning the water off related to Coffin Street project, so right about the time we finish this, Coffin Street project's gonna start coming, so it's, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of disruption.
Luckily, the parking lot work at, for Village is sandwiched between the Excel gas lines on Coffin and the actual work on Coffin, so at least the parking lot is gonna be open during all the Coffin active work, we'll see how that all goes, but that's the, that's the point, because the parking lot work is supposed to start in early July.
So when I was telling you, railroad's easy.
All the other stuff.
It is, it is, doing self-performing construction and occupied construction as well is a major lift, it is doing, like for Katie, our project manager, doing Ascent, a brand new project from start to finish is a giant project for her, but this is another level of coordination and detail and, and communication with so many parties, so she's getting a good, a good dose of good experience, so. And otherwise, then what, we'll be starting to pick up here soon, because we've got, we have this rolling pattern going on, and so we're gonna pick up those project projections that we presented to you all, I think, in early 2023, and then you saw a bit of it with the budget, because we, we do have a development fee budget that we went over in the fall, we're picking that up as well to say, okay, so once we get through Village and Ascent, then how do we pace out the next, the next plans? Can we bring that back?
We are meeting as staff with some financial advisors and a debt company to potentially look at another project that we've talked about, and so it's possible we may need an executive session issue to talk to you all about it, if that one, that project is going to be, it's gonna have affordable units, but it's also then gonna have workforce attainable units and be restricted, income restricted, so once we get a sense, we're talking to the financial advisors, we may, we're, we're gonna need potentially a, an executive session.
Any questions about development?
No. Stayed on operations.
All right, I'm going to, our operations team is, is absent tonight, so I'm going to jump in, the very second to last page in your packet has our occupancy report, overall, we're at 95% occupied, it's 93 once you consider Village on Main with the units that we've held, but those are getting leased up as, as we have them renovated and temporary moves not needing them anymore. Our, I mean, I'll just let you ask any questions about the vacancy report, including meth units, if you have any questions.
How's that new company that you're doing for now, remediating, is that?
Sarah, so they have, they just completed one of the suites and their pricing came in, you know, lower than our demos, so that's obviously a very good thing, so we're, we're still, and actually, we use them to clean another bathroom here in town, so we're liking what we're seeing.
Good.
So, they had, they had some bumps in the road regarding staffing, so that was where we had just met with them a few weeks ago to make sure that they're still operating and they do have an officer available, so.
And then I'll move to property updates if there are not other questions on vacancy. Just a couple of highlights, the center people with disabilities have been going around to coffee and conversations at all the properties, doing outreach for their services, and so that is part of the services that. services that we ask them to provide in exchange for the, the deal that we did on the building, selling the building to them. And so that has kicked off, I got to listen to that yesterday, and the woman that they have going around doing it, she's wonderful. She's really great, and I'm excited, the residents were excited, and I'm excited to see how that comes together.
I don't remember if Commissioner McQuillie and Chris were here. The building, uh, the value was around six hundred fifty thousand. They could only afford a half a million, so the board agreed to sell that for a half a million in exchange for, what is it?
Five years.
Five years. They're going to be providing services to the residents in the Longmont Housing Authority properties, similar to what we did, that we talked to you all about in your capacity as L H A and city council with Recovery Cafe, to where they have the C D G funding, but then they're providing recovery services primarily at the suites right now. I mean, that's its own thing, but working with them, so we also work on partnerships, and that way to help other local organizations, but then get the services that we need at our facilities.
In our efforts that were related to the first couple of items on tonight's agenda, we're still working on the big ticket accessibility improvement items while we have the special funding sources available. So we just finished, uh, brand new handrails at the Briarwood here about a week ago, and so that was a big ticket item that we're really glad, we're knocking these things off, and we've got a couple other slated for the summer and early fall, really trying to kill multiple birds, I hate that phrase, get very, be very productive on multiple ends of things, using the special one-time funds and getting all this stuff done. We've got some staff changes coming up, so we have a new maintenance tech, his name is Zee, he started at Spring Creek and Fall River on Friday. He comes with the time experience, so we're happy to get that stacked up. The, our community manager, Gregory, he resigned and left and traveling the world right now. The assistant community manager, John, who the residents love, accepted that position of community manager, so the residents were very happy about that. And so they, his position, the assistant, is currently posted. And then we're hiring also an assistant manager for the suites and what will be Zinnia, so we're trying to get that position on boarded ahead of doing the lease up, because that'll be a big lift. Oh, and we have, oh, I think that's it, just two assistant community manager positions.
I have a question on the, so the second round of surveys for, just what, what has been the feedback, looking at trauma-informed design, like how are those surveys playing out and how are the residents responding?
I don't think we have, what I should ask Jonah, our onsite community manager, is if she's gotten any feedback from the residents or how well their participation levels were. But I don't think we have the results from MSU yet. They're waiting to put those together in the community management action. But that's a good question. I'll follow up with Jonah. Any other overall operations questions?
I don't see any hands up.
I think we just have Sarah.
Unless you guys want to know about the financials. So first quarter financials are in the packet, but there are no concerns except for AMN and Briarwood, which currently have four vacant units, and several are now put meth up over in those places. We've already reached the annual budget in the first quarter on vacancies for those two properties, so we're going to want to monitor those as, as they, they go through the year on those. And then there's, there's no real heavy hitters with AR. There was about a thousand dollar increase from December to April now, as far as the current balances. We do have some past balances that are working through the election process, but no red flags there either.
Do you have any additions for?
I'll let Sarah take that and then.
Let me help you say to you.
Sure. I passed the baton of bacon.
So yes, we will have one coming up at the suites, the end of the month, late next week, and that's the only one.
We, we do have another one that's an interesting one, and it's primarily related to the fact that they don't need qualifications anymore because of income, and, and that ties to the vouchers and other things, so it's, it's a good story, and the income has definitely improved, but when you have all of these other requirements under your voucher standards and these other pieces, then they can no longer be in a big unit with a project base, so we're working through those issues right now.
There are grace periods built in, but those have passed, and ideally, it's a graduate, and we've, we've reached out and tried to provide, we've reached out to other communities. We have seventy, eighty percent units now at Chrisman, but they leased up.
They leased up.
Which is actually really good news for Chrisman, so we were really trying to help, help a household graduate out, but it's a tough, it's a big change.
Does that happen often, where they?
This is the first time.
This is the first time we've seen it.
It feels like there should be a celebration.
In a way, in most of the streets.
Yeah, it's hard.
Yeah, I know.
It's hard, I think. And it's, it's the classic example of that threshold.
Yeah.
I mean, we see, I mean, we see it in different programs, but, you know, this one because of all the federal requirements, I mean.
Exactly. So we did the occupancy and property updates, so probably helping safety.
All right. Working on some staff training regarding meth and fentanyl and what to be aware of when they're in the units. Also, this came up recently too, we had some, you know, whether, you know, a person that gets transferred to the hospital or they pass, what do we do with the animals? So really working with procedure with staff on, on that piece. I'm on, I'm in the hunt for a new background company. We're not really happy with what we're seeing with the one that, basically the one that we were using got bought out by a company in California, and we're not, we're not getting what we need. And this is actually very, everyone right now is having issues with the backgrounds, so for one that I work with, so working on that. Our meth detectors, I met with our vendor today, talked to him about some things we're seeing and, and looking at getting some quotes on some detectors for Village on Main, and so maybe we could give our L H A staff an update on that soon. What was interesting is that they, this, they work with a gentleman that owns a company on Root Field, and there's a product that's called Crystal Clear, and if you, like, when the detector goes off right away, and if you can get in there, it's like spray, and you don't have to wear a lot of P P E, you can wipe it down, and it gets to the level five or below. So I'm going to meet with this gentleman soon to find out, I guess he's been in business for quite some time, so ironically, he's in Root Field, and New Zealand had to introduce me to him. What else? Cameras. The city is, I believe, in the next week going to sign a contract, so I'm working with purchasing as we speak. We're going to have to change a few things that we have in our scope of work, but we're ready, I mean, I can't wait because I keep talking about this, it's like broken record. It'll be good.
You want to talk about our, our health? Cameras were improving that in terms of what we had to do, and you go down this, and it's like, oh, it doesn't need this, and you, it was, it was wearing everyone out.
So, and then cost per service have been relatively very low, very low, even at the suites. So we're all, we're all doing well.
What's wrong? Let's go on. I don't trust summers. I don't trust this.
And I can't say, reviewing the security reports, this company, we're, we're catching things that need to be caught, and we wouldn't be able to do that without these folks that are going to the properties and seeing the things that just aren't being afforded by residents or, you know, people trespassing, so that's, it's working very well.
Right now, they're randomly going to properties, once we get the cameras in, they're just going to be monitoring the cameras, and then we can still do some random.
Got to love technology, but it works, it works, and if it doesn't, it's out.
Like when we lost internet during C-Mass.
Any questions for Sarah on health and safety?
Very thorough.
Thank you. Just good, good reports on everything. A lot of work. Harold looks tired, but Molly, for some reason, you're looking a little better.
Well, right, the higher extra capacity, so.
Yes. Do we have any comments from commissioners?
I'm going to need your.
I guess, I guess, my commissioner McCollough, my commissioner, I'll be in, I'll listen to you.
Hi.
I'm halfway out the door, man.